I'll ask Brother John Beaumont if he would give our afternoon prayer.
Let us pray. Most gracious and holy God, you are sovereign over all creation. We thank you for this day that you have provided for us. We lift up this time, this council, these members of this council, that they may seek your wisdom and your guidance, the work that they do, the work you have called them to. We give you thanks and praise, and we do so in the strong and sure name of Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brother John. Good to have you with us again. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Attorney Peoples.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Counselor Tyron.
Here.
Counselor Carter. Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Pulliam is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor McLendon.
Present.
Counselor Monday is absent. Counselor Holt.
Here.
So I've got seven out of ten present.
I heard from Counselor Pulliam, he's out of town, and I heard from Counselor Monday, I believe he's ill at the present time. Moving on, first item on the agenda would be bid opening, because we had two sets of bid openings. One of them was on the agenda, the second one failed to be placed on the agenda. You do have tally sheets on both sets of bids. The first set would be on the painting of the water tank, and as pointed out to me, it's a 500,000 gallon water tank, not a five hundred, not a dollar, it's gallons. You have a copy of the bids in front of you, if you've reviewed them. Could I have a motion and second them to send them to Utility Commission for disposition?
So moved.
All in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are referred. The second set have to do with the West Memphis streetscape, which is a continuation of the project that's underway with Main Street. You have a tally sheet there. We were looking at this in pre-council, and there's tremendous difference in the bids for the public's information only. One bid was for $78,960, and the other one is for $250,000. So it was quite a discrepancy in the bid, but could I have a motion second to refer these to planning and development for disposition?
So moved.
All in favor, by aye.
Aye. Mayor, I would like to suggest that they proceed with caution, because with the difference in the funding of the bid.
I agree with you. There's certainly a tremendous difference.
Yes.
And Paul was with us in pre-council. I didn't hear that vote exactly very clear. All in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It is approved, and they are referred. You have a copy of the minutes in your packet? Are there any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They are approved as submitted. Moving on, old business, we have a third reading on an ordinance on rezoning. I would like to, I have some people that I want to make an exception and move up to speak on this matter. We have him, Mr. Milton Yarborough. If he would come forward to the microphone and speak on this matter prior to the vote. Mr. Yarborough, give your name, address, and whatever information you want to bring forward.
First of all, Mayor Johnson, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I guess first we'd like to say we appreciate your dedicated service to the citizens of West Memphis. My name is Milton Yarborough. I live at 415 West Barton. My wife and I have lived at this location since 1991, and we've been residents of West Memphis since 1968. And we want to thank you at this time for the opportunity to address our concerns about the proposed zoning change before you now. In 2008, zoning ordinance number 2195 was passed designating the area as RE, which conformed to the majority of the properties already developed. There was a great concern expressed by the neighborhood to the Planning Commission at that time, that allowing smaller lots could lead to the detriment of all the properties in the future. There's even a greater concern in the future, as these homes become older and less property is available for development, that builders will be investing in properties and requesting zoning changes, such as this request before you now, that they may reduce lot sizes and build more houses. Because you're aware that every day there are families that are seeking jobs and being transferred from other locations, even to Memphis, as I was in 1968, that have a great interest in living in West Memphis. West Barton and the surrounding area has a great appeal because of the schools. I, as well as those in the neighborhood who are present here today, and those that signed the petition, of which there was ninety-seven, and at this time I would like to present that petition to the council for their record. We ask that you deny this request to amend ordinance number 2195 and preserve the integrity of the neighborhood, not only for the present property owners, but for those in the future that may see it as a desirable place to raise their families. We, as citizens of West Memphis, look to the council to make those decisions that will best represent the betterment of our city. We applaud the decision that was made in 2008 to include this section of West Barton in the RE zoning district. And we feel that it is not the best interest of this neighborhood to take one half of one block and make an exception to this present zoning ordinance. I think I speak for the entire neighborhood in expressing our thanks to the council for allowing us to come before you and express our concerns for the future of the places we call home. I assure you that I'm not opposed to Mr. Ford building or developing this property as it is currently zoned. It has been a neglected and overgrown property for years, which part of that time was before Mr. Ford owned or acquired the property. We are confident that your decision will be based on your best judgment for the good of all those who have a vested interest in this neighborhood, not only at the present, but for the future as well. Thank you for your undivided attention.
Thank you, Mr. Yarborough. And on this same item, we had a person request to speak on this item, and I'll move it up to the same location, and Mr. Mike Ford had signed up.
Mayor Johnson and ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and meet with you today. I realize that decisions sometimes can be tough. Leadership means always that we have to make tough decisions, but fair decisions. I ask you today to make a decision that's tough, fair, and I ask you to remove the emotion from the decision. I want to talk to you and talk to you about the neighborhood for just a minute. I'm a property owner in that neighborhood, not just this property. My parents live at 130 West Roosevelt, where I resided for eighteen years. But I want to talk to you about the particular property that we're talking about today. Number one, when we look at the neighborhood as it has developed over the years, we'll find that the smallest lot in that neighborhood has about 7,500 square feet in it. The current new zoning, the RE, in that particular section, and if you'll, and I brought a map as well to show you some of the other lots and how they're spread out through that section. The proposal that I'm proposing to do, the average lot is 13,325 square feet. The largest lot in that little area over there has 26,000 square feet. The largest lot that I'm proposing to do is 16,400. So what you will find in that area is an average lot size of 14,200 square feet surrounding this property. The average lot size of which I'm proposing to build on that lot is three houses, and the average lot size is 14,350 square feet, so larger than the average lot size in the surrounding area. The smallest lot size over there is fifty foot wide, okay? The smallest lot that I'm proposing to do is sixty-five foot wide, okay? So as you can see, very proportionately, very much the same that we're looking at right now. The average distance between houses in that neighborhood is twenty-five feet. The average distance between the houses that I'm proposing to build is twenty-two square feet, so three feet different. Just to talk about the residential, new little gerrymandered section that we've rezoned, let's talk about that for a minute. The current requirement requires that you have 20,000 square feet in a lot, okay? Has to be 100 foot wide, okay? If you are traveling west on West Barton Street, right next to the proposed lot that I'm talking about redeveloping into three single-family residences with 2,000 square feet at a value of starting at about $200,000, what you will find on West Barton Street and Gibson that backs up to it are lot sizes that are an average of 13,977. I have the plat here and have them marked. Traveling west, continuing west on West Barton Street that backs up to Roosevelt, these are the properties that are the closest to the property that we're talking about today. The average lot is 16,699, so a little larger than what I'm proposing to do, because I'm proposing to do an average of 14,330, but still very similar in size. Little background, little history. My wife and I purchased that lot in 2005. We made a business decision to purchase that lot based on the fact that we knew we could take that lot, subdivide it into three lots, and build three single-family residential housings. That's what the zoning was when we bought it. We made a business decision to purchase that lot based on the requirements at that time, okay? We took that to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission approved that lot split. I don't have to tell you about, a whole lot about what happened to the housing market shortly after that. I made a second business decision, and I think one that probably paid dividends for me at the time. I decided not to develop those three properties, just simply based on the current housing market. When I got ready to build those three houses in May of this year, I went down to Dennis Sorrell, no idea that there was any problem that existed. I had my financing in order with the local lender to build those three properties. I was, had the property staked out, ready to build. When I found out then, and I knew there had been a change in the zoning ordinance there, so let me back up and tell you, I was aware of that. However, I did not know it affected my piece of property. So when the lot split was approved, I just, once again, never had an idea that there would be a potential problem for me. The problem lies in the fact, and this is my fault, I hired an architect and I hired a surveyor, whose job was simply to do the project and then record the plat. I did not know that a plat in the city of West Memphis expires in two years. No one ever told me that. But that's not anybody's fault other than my own, and the surveyor should have filed that plat. If they had, we wouldn't be standing here today. But let's talk about some other issues that I think are really important. I want to share with you, I want to, I just want to show you this for a minute, because when you talk about the lot sizes that exist in that area, by the way, and that, and I really do respect everybody. Many of my friends live in that area. I lived there for eighteen years, so I know a lot of people up and down the street, and my parents still live in that area. I have no desire to develop anything that's not going to be good for the area and good for the city of West Memphis. Like most of you, I love the city of West Memphis. I've had opportunities to leave the city of West Memphis and would have done so, had I so desired to do. But I love this town. I want to see this town continue to prosper and to grow. But in order for this community to prosper and grow, we also have to think progressively. We have to think about how we continue to redevelop our areas of our community that have either leveled out in their property values or are beginning to dip down, and that is one of those areas that no longer is level. The property values are beginning to slip just a little bit. It has been a very stable neighborhood, and I don't want anybody to misread what I just said. It is still a very stable neighborhood. But in order for us to continue for that neighborhood to be stable, we have to look at ways in which we bring new people back into the community. We have to provide housing for younger folks, people who are looking to move here, that want to make this their home. If you will just take a look at this area as it exists over there right now, I have taken the time to give you an idea of the lot sizes that exist over there. If you see something highlighted in yellow, that is a fifty-foot lot, okay? I did not mark all the lots. Lord, you'd take me all day to mark all the lots. But in fairness, I also wanted you to see how mixed this subdivision is. If you will look at the lots, this is not the prettiest way to do this, you'll look at the lots marked in orange, those are seventy-five foot lots, and the lots in blue are hundred-foot lots, okay? Also, I will point out to you, this is your new residential estate zoning, right here, okay? You had to pick this whole area back here. However, this is my subject lot right here. We chose, for whatever reason, I think I know what reason, to leave the lots directly behind it, because the lots directly behind it are all fifty-foot lots. So we really cut that portion out and added additional lots. Directly across the street from this subject property is a fifty-foot lot. Two doors down from that is another fifty-foot lot. There are seventy-five foot lots here. This is the area that I was talking about, when you, right next to the property that I'm talking about building the three houses on, where the average lot size is 13,300, okay? 600, excuse me. Across the street, 16,600. But even within this new residential estate area, you're going to find all sizes and shapes of lots. However, the fact is, most of these lots don't even meet the new zoning. Most of them don't have 20,000 square feet in them. I'm going to ask you today to make a very tough decision. I know it's a tough decision. I have great respect for the job that each of you do, great respect for the fact that this city is run like a business, and I'm proud, when I travel all across the great state of Arkansas, to be able to say that the city of West Memphis is in good financial decision, in condition, because you guys and ladies have made great decisions for this city. But I'm asking you today to remove your emotional hat, because if you deny this, it is strictly an emotional decision. I'm asking you to base your decision on fact. The fact is, these three houses meet the standards that are built within that neighborhood. There's no denying it. All you've got to do is drive up and down the street, and you will see that what I'm proposing to do, the lot sizes are consistent with the lot sizes that exist there. So yes, I'm going to ask you today to make a very tough decision, and remember, these are my neighbors as well, my neighbors for eighteen years. But I want to ask you to make the right decision, remove your emotional feelings about this, and make this decision based on the facts that I have presented today. Mayor, thank you so very much for allowing me to speak today, and I, once again, I close by telling you how much I appreciate all the hard work each and every one of you do as elected officials, and thank you for your time today.
We had additional people that would like to speak, but I'd ask them to just limit it to one on each side for sake of repetition more than anything else. So that concludes the people that were authorized to speak. On to old business, Mr. City Attorney, this ordinance is up for the third reading. Would you read the title?
Title of the ordinance reads as follows: An ordinance to rezone property in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, located at approximately 417 West Barton, from RE Single Family Residential Estate to R1 Single Family Residential.
You've heard this ordinance read for the third and the final time. Do I have a motion to approve? You've heard it read for the final time. Do I have a motion to approve? Hearing none, the ordinance dies for lack of a motion and fails. That concludes the items of old business. Moving on into new business, we have the first reading of an ordinance on fees for the ambulance service.
I make a motion, reread O1 by title only.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion second, read title only. All in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Would you read the title to O1?
Title of this ordinance reads as follows: An ordinance to amend Section 5.60.040 of the West Memphis Municipal Code regarding charges for ambulance service operated by the West Memphis Fire Department and for other purposes.
That concludes the first reading. We'll have it on our next regular scheduled meeting for a second reading. Under new business, we have one other item that I'm wanting to make a deviation on that signed up for citizens' request, but it's an item that they're going to make a request of you for some action on. I believe Mr. Free is here. He has properly signed up through email, Reverend Coleman, like you suggested, that I start accepting.
Yes.
This is a project that's been going on for years, I might add, with the Mayfair Apartments, a number of years. They were here in the last twelve months with, I believe, this same company was being represented by a different individual at that time, and they were here and made a presentation there. They requested that I furnish him a letter of support, which I declined, and he wanted to know what he could do about it, and I told him they could come and talk to the council, and if the council wanted to sign the letter of support, I'd back off and leave it alone. So having given you a little bit of advance information on it, Mr. Free, who is a spokesman for the group, name and address and your request.
Thank you very much, Mayor Johnson, and City Council, thank you for your time. My name is Fred Free with Community Development, Inc. We're located at 4110 Eaton Avenue in Caldwell, Idaho, and it's a great time to be in Memphis, nice and hot, and it's nice and cool in Idaho, but here I am, anyway. I miss the rains. I was here last around, at the first meeting in February, and we were hoping to get your approval, to get a letter of support from the mayor for applications to Arkansas Development Finance Authority for funding to rehabilitate and redevelopment the Mayfair Apartments. We were rushed at that time. City Council did not have adequate information, I will admit. We were up against a deadline. We got started late, and it was, it was not a good situation, and the council did not approve our request at that time. Since then, we have continued to develop plans and ideas for that, and we've gotten some important input from the community and from the two council members from that ward. We met with Councilmember Robinson and McLendon in June, or I guess it was towards the end of May, and also the city planner attended that meeting, and we had, got some good input, and some good ideas from them, and carried on with their suggestion to hold a neighborhood meeting, which was held, I think it was the seventh of June, if I remember the date correctly. Held that at a church down the street from the Mayfair Apartments, and got fairly good attendance from members of the community. I was not in attendance at that meeting, so I'm going to ask one of our co-sponsors, Dr. Calvin King, who is the director of the Arkansas Land and Farm Development Corporation, to kind of give you a brief summary of the input and the results we got from the neighborhood meeting. So, Dr. King?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. I must say, it was, it was a very exciting meeting, you know, with the community and the input that we received, the community's concerns on the part of Councilwoman Robinson as well, and wanting that to occur. Some of the specific concerns that came from the participation of residents was on the size of the properties, the actual apartments itself. And of course, the architects, they're going to address any question in reference to that in the plans that are being developed right now around the property. I must say this, that was a real concern, in my impression, that the community, they would like to see something done about the situation as it presently stands, and the status as it is now, that, you know, it is not providing anything in any positive, productive fashion to the community, and I'm assuming the same as such to the city, possibly more of a liability to that extent. The other is that what is being proposed is something that would, would be an asset, would be a major contribution overall for the community, and what it would have to offer as far as residential quarters itself is concerned, housing is concerned, and overall improvement. And that's what we're proposing to do. Arkansas Land and Farm Development Corporation, now we're a community development corporation, we've been in the business for some thirty-two years, both in housing development and partnership, such as with Community Development, Inc. is concerned, both in the Critney County area as well as other areas. I commend the community for wanting to voice their opinion and the input that they made on the part of what they see as being the future for the area, and, you know, we're looking forward to working with them. And any other questions you may have in reference to that meeting? Ms. Robinson?
No, I just appreciate you attending the meeting. It was raining. We had a pretty good crowd. The pastor was very generous to open his doors, and the input was positive. And all I can say is that we are ready for the go-ahead.
Okay.
Oh, I have one question. We did talk about the, I think with the 700 square foot
Yeah, they changed that.
apartment, and do they have, or what we can see on the new?
Right. We're going to, we're going to address that. I know that about the architects, they're going to address the specifics from the, as far as the expansion itself is concerned. Now, one thing, as you know, it was sort of, as Fred just recently gave reference to things, we're sort of put on hold, and the fact, you know, we do need the letter from the city in order for us to proceed ahead, and to give the architects the go-ahead as well, in doing, dealing with the redesign. We've had all those discussions, specifically as relation to what the community concerned with, the expansion on both the 600-plus some odd square foot, where that would regard, would involve some possibly combining of some of the units to create one that would provide the type of size, and they can speak more to the specifics on that, and what that would look like, both in design, as well as square footage and other things from that perspective, and other things that would make it both more marketable and more appealing from the overall community perspective. Okay? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King. I'm going to introduce John Emberton from Hudson Gary Architects to kind of describe in better detail and more accurately than I could, some of the changes we're proposing to make to those units, make them larger and more marketable, and really more in line with what's offered in the rest of the community.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. We have been asked, and we have looked at the possibilities of combining units, expanding units, and reducing the overall numbers of units, in order to provide some apartments that have four bedrooms, some apartments that have nicer-sized living rooms and master bedrooms. Some of the apartments will be potentially vaulted ceilings on the second floor, to increase the spaciousness and the marketability, improve the light. We would be reducing even further from what we showed you the last, excuse, last time, the total number of dwelling units by doing this. We're not proposing to expand from where we were previously. We're still creating the open spaces and putting in the additional new amenities that we had originally talked to you about. So unless, we need to review some of the things we covered in our previous meetings, I'm open to any questions.
John, you made a statement, and I'm not playing with words, but you said we are looked at it, we have looked at this proposal as to adding larger units. Have you looked at it, or are you adding larger units?
We have been instructed by the developer to see how many of these units that we can combine. combine into larger units by eliminating units, basically, Bill. We're going to be taking units out, taking that square footage into adjoining units to make those remaining units more marketable.
But we do not know how many at this time?
We're looking at probably taking an additional dozen units out of the mix that exists in order to be able to expand approximately 24 to 30 of the other units into larger units that will be more marketable, we think.
How many total units will you end up with after all of this?
I think we had talked about a reduction of, should have about 12 units, 10, 12 units.
It was 110.
It was 110. We'd be under 100, a little under 100. Still a size that makes it attractive and makes it the right size for full-time management's, full-time maintenance, to be able to staff it at the levels you need to have for a facility like this.
Any other questions of either John or Fred?
And once we get past this initial stage, Mayor, we can, we'll be developing floor plans for each of the unit types to be offered. It's a little premature without knowing that the city would back you and going forward to expend those kind of energies and time and money commitments until we feel like we've addressed the, everything the city has asked us to address.
Once you get your, if you get your letter of approval today about how long will it take to get the projects going and how long will it take to complete the project?
When they turn us loose to start development plans, it'll take us, we'll spend probably between three and four months just to get the plans developed. Now, I don't know what the funding schedule is exactly, and Fred can talk to that, but it'll take us between three and six months to be ready to break ground.
And you'll be finished by when?
Usually a project of this type will take around 12 months to complete from the time it starts.
Because I think someone said in the meeting that we held, it would be about 2015 by the time it's totally completed?
Depending on when we're actually able to start, that could be true.
I know that was, Councilwoman Robinson, I know that was one of the concerns that you'd expressed and also the neighborhood, and the next application round will be around the beginning of February again in 2013. And it will take about three months for funding decisions to be made after that, so that gets us to May, let's say around the end of May. We'll have preliminary plans done, so kind of, we'll know what we want to build, but they won't actually be construction drawings, so they'll need probably about three months to do the construction drawings after we get the announcement of the award of funding. So that takes us into August, probably before we can, can, we'll have the plans done, we have to, you know, submit to the city for review, we have to close on the construction financing. I suspect we won't be able to start building until close to the end of 2013. 12-month construction time, be done around the end of 2014, so end of 2014, beginning of 2015 is probably when we'd start lease up. I wish we could go sooner, believe me.
Mayor, may I, I guess my question is, the window of opportunity with ADFA, what is your filing date?
I'm sorry?
Your filing date, your window with ADFA?
They haven't announced the actual date yet. Last year, I think it was the, if I remember correctly, it was the 5th or the 6th of February, so it'll be right around the same date. It's usually on a Friday, the first Friday of February.
My only concern is asking the council to grant a letter of recommendation when I have just not seen what you're actually going to be building. So I know there's been a lot of communication, I know you've listened to the neighborhood, and I truly appreciate that, but still have nothing in print for us to see.
Yeah.
And with that window of opportunity being that far down the pipe, is it that difficult to go ahead and present your drawings and let us look at it, bring it back up at the next council meeting?
We could, we could have floor plans, and then we do have renditions of the kinds of finishes and the way the exterior of the buildings would look.
Right. Now, I mean, all that will have to go through DRC anyhow, but I'm just curious about, you know, is it truly going to match up? How many units will there be? What's the market analysis on us? What's it going to be the rental? How's it going to work? Just like to have some information. The project on the surface, I like, you're doing something with a plated area that the Des Moines needs something to run to, but just need more information from my standpoint.
Right.
Can't speak for the rest of the council, but that's just me.
Right. It's, I've been a little bit hesitant to turn the architects loose without getting a better feel for how the city council is going to respond to us coming back and asking again for approval. I was hoping today you'd authorize us to work with the mayor, to get to the point where he's ready to sign a letter to support our applications, and we could certainly contribute it or provide additional information like floor plans and an exact unit count after we've done the thorough analysis. I'm not excited about traveling all the way back from Idaho again for a city council meeting, but we can have people who are closer by come and appear directly in front of the council and ask for that approval after you've had a chance to look at that detailed information, if that's what you want.
From my standpoint, I definitely can't speak for everyone, but your need to travel backward, from my standpoint, would not be necessary. You have more than competent people here with you today.
Appreciate that.
That can present that.
We're very lucky with it.
And on the surface, everything sounds good. I just need a little bit more.
Basically, this is just a letter of approval that you're asking us for today, and even once, if we decide to give you that letter of approval, that does not mean that you're going to get the grant, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So what you're doing is just asking so you can see whether or not you will qualify for the grant. I have no problem with that. We've met with you all, and I think putting that much money into this project, I believe that you will do what you've said, and it's not like you're just going to go in there and start building. You'll have to present your plans before the planning commissioners, and of course, city council can always look at that, so I don't feel bad about that idea of going forward with it.
Yeah.
And it's the word that Marco and I are representing that. I feel if he and I are on board with you, I pray that everyone else will, at least the majority, to give you the go-ahead.
And also.
Marco, if I may, just one thing, I don't want to misstate what I'm thinking. I was concerned about if ADFA grants the recommendation, is there a liability issue, you know, if we deny the drawings? You know, does that put you in a position with them? And I just want to make sure from a liability standpoint, we don't do something that could adversely hurt someone, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we would, it would make perfect sense for us to make sure you're happy with our designs and what we were doing before we actually submitted the application, even if we already had the letter of support approved.
I was just going to add that my decision on the will of the people that was at that meeting that live right there, so they want us to proceed with it, so I'm in support for it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So really, what we're asking for today is just approval to work with the mayor to get a letter of support for our applications, and if we don't have a problem with that being conditioned upon you being able to look at the floor plans and the size of the units and number of units before he actually signs the letter.
I think we've had quite a bit of discussion. I'd like to make a motion.
I second that.
Have a motion and, motion and second.
The motion is to grant the mayor to write the letter of approval.
I will write that letter, provided those members of the city council that vote yes sign on it also.
That's okay.
I want their signature on it. I think you know the problems I went through before. I think you are very much aware of the problems and the legal ramifications that showed up in it before, and.
Right.
I'm not comfortable with signing it on my own. If every member of the council will sign off on it, I'll sign off on it. Not every member, every member that votes for it.
Okay.
And you know what I'm addressing, the legal difficulties. Have those been resolved?
I think we need to address those on the floor.
Have those problems been resolved that existed?
Yes. Now, I need to make sure I understand exactly what you're referring to in terms of the legal issues.
I would think you know.
Okay. Does this have to do with ADFA and their approval?
No, it has to do with your internal problems.
Our internal problems.
Your predecessor that came here.
Right, right, right. And there were some changes between what I told you at the February meeting from what he had represented before, when he had come and met with you earlier. He is no longer with our company, so in terms of any issues that you might have with him or that we might have with him, those are resolved. He's not connected with us any longer. And if that's what you're referring to, yes, those legal issues have been resolved.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to authorize a letter of support to ADFA on behalf of, what's the company name?
Community Development, Inc.
Okay, you have the record, okay. And here, no other discussion?
You have a discussion. I've got a question.
Yes.
I guess this question is going to be to the city attorney. The letter of support or recommendation, how binding is that on the city? What does it put us? Does that just authorize us to give them authority to proceed with the loan, or what does it do?
That letter of support is an element of the application that they are making for their financing, and it doesn't obligate us in any form or fashion, it just simply completes the package of information that they need to submit to get their financing.
Okay. So they would not be able to get their financing without this letter?
I don't know if it's totally prohibited, but I know that's.
It's a prerequisite.
It's a prerequisite, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, since I want everyone to sign with me, call roll.
Counselor Tyrone?
At this time, I'm going to abstain until I can get some more information. I'm all for Mayfair being approved, Lord knows it needs it, but I think there's still some concerns that haven't been addressed.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor McLendon?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Don, do you want to vote?
I'll vote yes, because everybody's in favor.
Okay. Janice?
It is passed. That concludes the items of new business. Moving on, we need permission to pay power equipment company, and that number is incorrect. What we need to pay them is 159-306-17, and you approved the purchase at the last council meeting, and this is just to approve the payment.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Under committee reports, I'll start with insurance.
Yes. Let me see if I can get together. Insurance did meet on the 28th, and we did some things that I think our citizen would be proud of. We talked with several insurance companies, and we ended up doing some things here. Once again, hardest thing to do, we requested a 15-month contract, and what the 15-month contract did, it would put us on a calendar-year basis as far as our deductible is concerned. A lot of you may remember, when we changed last year in the middle of the year, a lot of our people who had already made their, or met their deductible for the year, had to start all over again with a new deductible, also new out-of-pocket monies. But with this contract, effective October 1st, we would have a new company. The new company is going to be Cigna. We've had Cigna before, and we got excellent service out of Cigna, and we're hoping for the same service. Now, everybody who have already made their deductible for the year will not have to make another deductible. As you can remember now, deductibles are calendar-year deductibles, so come January 1st, everybody would have the new deductible, but not now. The deductible you already made is going to carry on. The next thing is, the out-of-pocket have not changed. If you have already made your out-of-pocket deductible, then it's going to be the same as far as, until the year ends, year's end, and once again, it's going to change again just like it normally do on the first of the year, which is a calendar year. In this way, we would be back on the calendar-year deductible, and we don't have to worry anymore if we change companies about having to make two deductibles in the same year, or you already made all your out-of-pocket expenses at $2,000 and then have to go back through it again. So we will not have that problem again. But before we go any further, I would like to, first of all, thank the people who worked so hard on that, trying to get that done. Dwayne Douglas is not here, he worked with us. Frank Martin is here, he worked with the council on it, and of course, the council members who worked so hard. Councilman McLendon attended a couple of meetings. Council Ramona Taylor, she was here all the way, we thank her. Council Cat was here all the way, and we thank him. And of course, Council Willis Monday worked with us all the way. So we think that we have a good plan in place. Basically, it's the same as our plan with United Healthcare was supposed to be, and so we feel good about it. And of course, with that being said, Mayor, I'd like to make a move that we accept the proposal or bid from United Healthcare as our city's carry. I mean, Cigna, excuse me. Excuse me, Cigna.
You're not, we're not covering the whole city.
No, no.
Would you incorporate into your motion to, that Matthew Glass be appointed our agent of record?
Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and second that we accept the bid of Cigna for our employees' healthcare, employees and dependents' healthcare coverage, and we appoint Matthew Glass as our agent of record. Any additional discussion? All in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is passed.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to also add something. Matthew Glass, stand up, please. He's one of our younger businessmen in our city, and of course, his office across the street at the Delta Bank, so if we have a problem with him, we can just go across the street and beat him up.
That is true.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Does that conclude your report, Rem?
Yes.
Okay. Budget?
Yes, sir, I passed out in pre-council the recommendation from the budget committee that met yesterday concerning the Burt Jackson Neighborhood Center. This resolution will be presented to you at the next council meeting to complete the funding for the remainder of this year. Also passed out in pre-council, the two sales tax reports, one for the Southland Gaming and one for our sales tax. Sales tax is $165,000 above budget for the first eight months of this year, and Southland Gaming is $458,000 above budget for the first eight months of this year. Everyone has a copy of appropriations report in their binders out front, if they didn't pick them up yesterday.
That concludes your report.
Yes.
Police?
Police Commission met August 23rd. Just a summary of some of the things discussed. Neighborhood watch, a national night out, was discussed, the night out is scheduled for Tuesday night, October 9th. Rain date is Tuesday night, October 16th. Internal Affairs investigator was acquitted on all accounts in a recent trial in La Rock. Fugitive Eddie Tribble was caught at an apartment in Marion, Arkansas. Police Department is currently interviewing for dispatchers at this time. There are no open patrolman slots, it's full at this time as well, which is good news. Code enforcement officers' position was discussed at length, and that is in order to have an actual patrolman out helping with our inspectors on code enforcement. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works?
Public Works met this past Tuesday, and we discussed the code enforcement officer and that that would be included in the 2013 budgeting process, that we would not encourage any movement before that budget. And Mr. Sorrell did report that Mr. Luger and Christine Bird, along with himself, have been meeting with police officers and training them in code enforcement so that it can be a cohesive approach to it. We did hear a claim for damages, no action was taken on that. The city engineers report, we're still working with the East Arkansas Regional Solid Waste District on developing a small-scale recycling program. The signalization project is on schedule and progressing well. The Southland Drive Phase 2, the proposals are due in, yes, today, the 6th, for that project, to select the engineering firm. The tourist information center, the ribbon cutting is scheduled for October the 30th. I believe, street overlay maps should have been put in the packet, if not, we will get those to you. The city engineer has made recommendations for the streets to be overlaid. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Not in a report, but we passed, Frank passed out a. All right. Thank you. Uh, not in the report, but we passed, uh, Frank passed out a schedule of the funds that available for distribution. And I think we wanted to go ahead and distribute the $3,821.42. Uh, I believe they, some discussion of that in pre-council. Uh, half of it has normally gone to the Good Neighbor Center and half of it to the Delta Neighborhood Action Council.
I'll make that motion that we split it 50/50 between those two agencies.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And he also passed out the list that shows how much you have individually to distribute to charities of your choice, as long as they qualify.
Okay. I have, I'd like to make a donation to 700, 74401 to the Wonder City Boys Club. I think, I like Jackson Boys Club, we call it. And 240, and 244 to the, uh, Girls Club, LA Jackson Girls Club, or Wonder City Girls Club.
Now, wait a minute. I believe you just, I believe you just overran your allocation.
Did I? 744 and 200?
I thought you said 244.
Maybe I did.
You did.
Well, 200.
Okay, 200, okay.
The balance.
To who?
To the Wonder City Girls Club.
Okay.
LA Jackson Girls Club. And the Boys Club is- Wonder City Boys Club. Okay, so 744 to Wonder City Boys Club and, uh, 200 to LA Jackson Girls Club. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have their distribution they want to vote on today?
Mayor, if I have with council's permissions, give the entire funds, uh, to families in transition.
Families in transition. Tracy. Anybody else? Here nothing else, could I have a motion and a second to approve these two distribution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They are approved. And I, I want you to note that Reverend Coleman just took the odd penny.
That you wanted.
That was mine.
You didn't get it.
Okay, moving on. Uh, have no appointments? Have no announcements?
Mayor?
Yes.
I got two announcements. You, you wanna go first?
Okay, yes. Okay, one announcement I'd like to make is the, uh, Arkansas Department of Health, in conjunction with the Black AIDS Institute, uh, we'll be hosting an annual greater-than-age testing tomorrow at, uh, from, uh, from 10 to 2, uh, at the, uh, Neighborhood Center. That's from 10 to 2 at the Neighborhood Center. It's testing for age. Uh, and we would like everybody who's interested, please come by. It's a test and will not cost anybody anything, but it's just, uh, to make us aware of age and we can just test, make sure how we stand. And that's tomorrow from 10 to 2. And it's sponsored by the Arkansas Department of Health and in conjunction with the, uh, Institute of, the AIDS Institution, Black AIDS Institution. Thank you. Uh, something else, uh, I want to mention here. One of our, one of my constituents, uh, came to me because we're concerned about the grass situation in our neighborhood, very concerned. One, uh, person came to me and said, why don't we talk to our people about, say, in a, create an adopt a lot program? In other words, if it's a lot beside my house and the city's already cutting it, but the people don't cut it, then the person right beside it cut it, cut that vacant lot. Now, one thing may happen if you start doing that. That means absentee landlords will never cut their lots, but it still will be clean. And we feel like if people would take that initiative to start cutting the lots beside them, then the city may be able to work with them and doing some things where we, they could benefit from, from keeping that neighborhood clean, other than just the fact of knowing our neighborhood is clean up. Because we've, we've gotta do something. But the person that came to me with this idea, I think it was an excellent idea, uh, to adopt a lot. And of course, we may be able to go further with it. Once people take the initiative, we may be able to do some things to help them. And I'm, I'm thinking some things, running some things through my head right now. If absentee landlord never cut the lot, city's been cutting it all the time. If these people just take the initiative of cutting it, then we may be able to do something to maybe further on down the road, give them ownership or something. Or, or if the city have any liens and the people want to, uh, pay taxes and things of that nature, they could acquire the property and the city relinquish whatever liens we have in their favor. So , uh, we, we want to encourage our people to take control of our neighborhoods because right now, uh, we've gotta do something about the problem. That, that, all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, uh, first I wanna give condolences to two of our city employees. Uh, Mr. Roy Gray lost his mom, Ms. LV Gray, as well as, uh, James Clay lost, with the sanitation department, lost his stepdaughter, Ms. Wendy Moore. I wanna definitely send out prayers to them during their time. Also, I wanna recognize, uh, Creighton County Human and Civil Rights, uh, President, Mr. Daniel Hagee, as well as the NAACP President, Shabaka, and all of the members of you all that's here. I wanna make an announcement on behalf of the, uh, NAACP. They are getting ready for their annual banquet. Um, it's October the 13th at 6:30 PM at the Eugene Wood Civic Center. It's entitled the Creighton County NAACP's 33rd Annual Freedom Awards Banquet. The tickets are $30 in advance, 35 at the door, tables, they seat eight at $240. The ads are $100 for a full page, $75 for a half a page. Vendor spaces is available. And for any more information, you can, uh, speak with the president of the NAACP, Mr. Shabaka, I'll bring it.
Any other announcements? I don't see any other here. I move, that concludes the business items on the agenda.